Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, June the 15th, 5:00 PM, Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. It's been a number of weeks. We actually see a few folks in the audience tonight, so thank you all for being here. It's a sign of hopefully getting back to normalcy here soon, so I want to thank you folks for being here. This evening, the pledge is, I mean, the invocation is offered by Father John Hanley of the Holy Redeemer by the Sea, and I'd like to read his invocation. "Let us pause and call to mind that, bidden or not, God is present with among us and in us. Good and gracious God, your word tells us that you know well your plans for us, plans for our good and not for our destruction. We thank you for your compassionate care. Help us in our planning to serve the legitimate needs of this community and not just our own concerns, to work for the betterment of all and not just for the vocal few. Keep us always mindful of the respect due to every person. Attune our ears to the sound of truth and the call of justice. May our discourse be civil, our disagreements respectful, our sharing be genuine, our listening outweigh our speaking, and our decisions be wise and compassionate. To you who are always with us, we raise this prayer. Amen." May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
County Manager, good evening.
Good evening. Item one on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is the Chairman's Update.
Thank you, County Manager. The only item I have this evening under Chairman's comments is, I'd like to reiterate for the public a video and message that I sent this past week after the control group met. I think it's important that this message be heard again and hopefully taken in a positive light. The control group met, I called a special control group meeting back to order last week. It had been a couple of weeks since we had met, and I thought it was important enough to call this meeting to order to address the controversial issue about mask wearing. And when we left that meeting, we were all in consensus as to how we would address that moving forward under the current COVID-19 conditions in Dare County. So I'd like to take this opportunity, if you folks will allow me to do this again, so that those that are sitting out there listening live and will hear this at their convenience, I'd like to reiterate what I recorded this past Friday. The Out of Banks municipalities and the county emergencies, Dare County, through me as the Chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, the six towns, through their mayors, the superintendent of the Cape Hatters National Seashore, and the Dare County Sheriff, come together regularly to manage, direct, and to coordinate the response and recovery for local governments and agencies. Let me repeat that. Myself, the six mayors, the superintendent of the National Park Service, and the sheriff come together on a regular basis when we have emergency issues to address the county and the six municipalities. While each town has the ability to declare a state of emergency and implement measures to protect the health and safety within their own towns and their own jurisdictions, this coordination between the six mayors, the superintendent, the sheriff, and myself unites our local government. And in most cases, and I'll reiterate that, in most cases, there's consistency in emergency response throughout the entire Out of Banks. Last Thursday, the control group met for the 42nd time. This is unprecedented, the number of meetings that this group has had. We've never had that many meetings dealing with a hurricane or any other emergency throughout the county. It's unprecedented, 42 times, dealing with the COVID-19 outbreak. As I mentioned earlier, it had been almost a month since the last meeting, and the topic last Thursday was specifically to address face masks and whether they should be mandatory throughout the county. After receiving feedback from our citizens, I thought it was important that I call this special control group meeting together to address this specifically. In our meeting, and we have very, very candid discussions amongst ourselves, but we generally, in all cases, in all circumstances, we come together and we agree and we have a consensus. The control group determined that wearing a face mask will continue to be strongly encouraged but not mandatory. The main reason for this was the inability to enforce a mandatory mask requirement. There'd be no way for our local law enforcement to respond to every situation or complaint about someone not wearing a face mask when in close contact with others. With our tourist economy, there are numerous obstacles in the way of trying to enforce this. For example, how do you determine who is from the same household? What if someone has a medical condition preventing them from wearing a mask? Or what if the vacationer who just recently arrived in the area and was unaware of the requirement? Our law enforcement agencies would bear the brunt of such a challenging enforcement issue during our busiest time of the year. Please know that these decisions are not made lightly. They are made with the best intentions for all, just as what we did back in March when we closed the beach down to out-of-state property owners and visitors. It was the right call at the time. They're made with the best intentions for everyone, not only our permanent residents, but our visitors and our non-resident property owners. Does it mean we shouldn't wear a face mask because it's not mandatory or required? Absolutely not. We know that wearing a face mask, when in a situation where social distancing is difficult to maintain, it reduces the risk of exposure to COVID-19, as does practicing social distancing. And let me ad-liberate here. For the life of me, I don't understand why you can't social distance. I don't understand it, folks. I don't get it. I just don't get it. In addition to washing your hands, there are the most effective ways to protect yourself, your family, and others. As the Governor said, as CDC has said, the President's Task Force has said, wash, wear, and wait. I'm sure you've noticed, business is booming on the Out of Banks. Vacation rentals in all the areas of the beach and even the Cape Hatters National Seashore are seeing record numbers. And what is today?
June the 15th.
Record numbers. Many of the vacation rental property management companies, everyone, the ones that I've talked to, I've talked about seven or eight of them, they're 100%. 100%. One of them even told me last week, after 60 days of being shut down, they were up 7% over last year's numbers. There's approximately 150,000 people, might even be 200,000 people, on the Out of Banks just this past week. While the population remains around the same number, it will almost completely turn over, and most will be new vacationers coming in again this coming weekend. As we move forward and we navigate the daily challenges associated with COVID-19, as the people who live and work here, each of us, and I'll repeat this, each of us needs to do our part. Let's be the example. We need to help educate our family, our friends, our neighbors, and our coworkers on the importance of wearing a mask when you're unable to practice social distancing. And I said this last Friday, and I've gotten some criticism because I said this, if you're a business owner, require masks be worn by employees and customers. Well, if you're going to ask businesses to do this, why can't you make it mandatory? Well, I've said that earlier, why we chose not to do that. It protects your employees, it protects your customers. If you're a service provider, wear a mask when you visit a home to make a repair or provide a service. It shows respect for others and their safety and encourages others to do the same. We have had, since May the 4th, since we allowed visitors in, excuse me, May the 16th, we allowed property owners, non-resident property owners in on the 4th, we allowed visitors in on the 16th. We've had approximately 1 million visitors visit the Out of Banks. We've had 10 cases since May the 16th through present. During this same time, and I'm thankful for that, by the way, I'm totally surprised that it hadn't been even higher, but people are doing something right, and that's a good thing. And these numbers are low, and God bless, I'm thankful that they are. But we need to remain diligent and do our part to continue to keep the numbers low. Wearing a mask and requiring masks in your local businesses and practicing social distances and frequently washing your hands are proactive steps to protect your safety and the health of our community. I wanted to put this out again because I think it's important that our residents hear this, I think it's important that our visitors hear this, I think it's important that our non-resident property owners hear this. And I think the most important is social media that throws so much garbage out there, hear this and hear it loud and clear. Because I'm quite over, and I'm going to make this real clear, I'm over social media. And I hope you hear me out there publicly, because I know tomorrow my phone's going to blow up, and my emails are going to blow up, but I'm over social media. Just do the right thing. Protect yourself, protect your family, and be respectful of one another. And we'll get through this. We'll get through this. County Manager?
Yes, sir.
That ends my Chairman's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item two on the agenda is the public comment period. Ladies and gentlemen, who would like to make public comment via email, this is public comment about any topic. There's a public hearing that comes up next. If you'd like to send comments about that, you can send them as well, but there'll be another opportunity to do that on the next agenda item. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, we'll wait a minute or two to see if we get any public comment, and then we'll go to the next agenda item.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item three, and this is a public hearing with regard to a proposed map amendment. It's to receive public comment for a zoning map amendment to the Buxton map classification for parcel number 031013001, and that property is located at 49251 NC Highway 12. And the request is to rezone the property from R3 residential to C3 commercial. As before, we'll take a minute to see if we get any public comment from this public hearing.
I'm sorry, say it again.
As we did with the public comment, we'll take a minute to see if we receive any as Chairman, seeing none, we can move forward if you'd like.
Yeah, let's move forward on that, Bobby, if you will.
We would close the public hearing, and then item four on the agenda is the action for the amendment or the rezoning request. The applicants are here. You mentioned earlier in your remarks, it was nice to see some people here. We still really haven't opened up for the public, but we do have people here. This one is because it's a rezoning request. We have some people here as well because it's a conditional use permit that requires them to be sworn, and we can't do that remotely, so that's why we have people here tonight. With that said, I'd ask Noah to come up and talk to you about item four, which is the Buxton zoning map amendment, and then when he finishes his remarks to sort of tell you what's going on, then we would ask the applicants to come forward if they would like to give you any comments that they might have before you act.
Good evening, Noah.
Good evening, Commissioners.
I'm sorry, one last thing. In the public hearing phase, you all did get an email, I think it's up on your desk, from an adjoining property owner, and you all have that, so I wanted to be sure you
A zoning map amendment application has been filed by Mr. John Canning for his property located at 49251 NC Highway 12 in Buxton. The property is currently zoned R3 high-density residential. The property currently has a minor mobile home park on it, which consists of 10 sites or less, and a 30-by-50-foot storage building that the applicant uses for personal storage and a workshop. The applicant is seeking to have his property rezoned to C3 commercial. It is the applicant's goal if the map amendment is approved to operate a commercial storage yard on the rear portion of the two-acre property. If the map amendment is approved, the applicant then would have to submit a site-specific plan to separate the mobile home park from the proposed storage area. That would be handled administratively through the Planning Department. The majority of the surrounding area around the applicant's property is zoned C2 commercial and C3 commercial. The property to the north is zoned C2 commercial, and a restaurant currently operates on one of the parcels. The property directly to the west is zoned R3, and it also has a minor mobile home park located on it. Properties to the east are zoned C2 and C3 commercial. The property to the south is zoned SED1 and is largely undeveloped. A copy of the zoning map for the area has been attached to this memo with the applicant's property highlighted in red. The C3 zoning district is established for the development of commercial facilities to furnish a broad range of services and commodities to serve the entire community. The C3 permits such uses as building supply and equipment sales, building contractors' offices and storage areas, mobile home displays and sales, and all uses currently permitted in the C2 zoning district. At the review of the surrounding properties, uses, and zoning, a reclassification to C3 commercial to the applicant's property would not disrupt the flow of the surrounding areas, zoning, and uses. The property would be contiguous with the properties already zoned commercial. The Planning Board recommended approval of the map amendment at their May 11th, 2020 meeting. I've included a finding of consistency for the board's review. A finding of consistency should be adopted with any favorable action. A draft motion for board's consideration is included with this memo. Again, the applicants are here if there's any questions for them.
Thank you all for being here.
How y'all doing?
Fine.
John Canning from Hatters is my wife, Leanne. The piece of property we have has seven trailers on the front and two and a half acres in the back, and Hatters Island has one other storage facility located in Frisco, and it is completely full at this time, and it's in low area. And we feel like, we've had several people ask us in the past about storing there, and we feel like it's not, no impact on our neighbors, they can't even see it from their property, and that's where we kind of want to go with it. It'll be boat storage and RV storage for people that leave their boats here and come down to fish in the summertime. That's what we're doing.
Good deal. Anyone have any questions? You answered my question. I was going to ask you, you know, when you said "storage yard," I was curious what you might have stored there.
Yeah, just kind of following what I see up here in Wanthees, want to have stored maybe 15 to 20 boats on trailers. People want to come from Virginia, and people want to tow every day to come down.
Got you.
So that's what we're kind of aiming to do.
Good.
There's a definition in the zoning ordinance that addresses his use of commercial storage yards that says what you can and cannot store there.
Okay, great. Good deal. Rob?
I was just going to, thank you for being here, Noah, thanks. Just this handout that was at our seats regarding the adjoining property and the questions from Mr. Robert Barris and Ms. Vicky Barris relative to the, again, I'm trying to reconcile, I believe, what I saw on my screen versus what's attached. Have you seen this?
Yes, sir, the email.
Yes, so it sounds like they're requesting a fence of some sort.
The fence is required for site-specific uses in the zoning ordinance, and the commercial storage yard would require a fence and a...
So a fence will be constructed, yeah, Bobby, go ahead.
Site plan. Just to make sure you know what you're doing tonight, tonight you're rezoning the property, and it doesn't mean he can do what he wants to do, it means it's rezoned and is a permitted use for a purpose. He'll have to come back with a site plan to deal with those other issues.
Thank you.
Right.
Got it.
But I believe that's your intention, is that?
Yes.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm inherently familiar with that property. I live close by, I've known this family for years, and I'd like to move if I could.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm going to move that the map amendment for the Canning family property located at 49251 NC Highway 12 in Buxton be reclassified from R3 residential to C3 commercial, approved as recommended by Dare County's Planning Board. The finding of consistency is adopted as part of my motion. Thank you.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Couch, and it's been seconded by Mr. Tobin and the Vice Chairman. Was there a third? I wasn't sure. So the motion has been made, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, those in favor of the motion didn't signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Chairman, that brings us to item five on the agenda, and that's William and Shelley Daughtry Group Development, and I'd ask Noah to come forward and introduce that item, and while he's doing that, Cheryl, if you would have the applicant sworn, please. This is a conditional use permit, so that you're required to make your decision based on the evidence that you hear tonight and not what you may have heard or heard in public comment or anything else. You've got to do it on what's here tonight. As a result, the applicants are being sworn because their testimony will be sworn testimony, and then we'll ask them some questions at the end to be sure we have our records straight as well. And when they're done, Noah will come forward and introduce this item for you.
Welcome back, Noah.
Thank you. Request for a conditional use permit for a group development for mini storage warehouses has been submitted by William and Shelley Daughtry. The proposed development is located in Mans Harbor and is identified as parcel 023856000 and 023856006 with the Dare County tax mapping. The parcels are zoned MHA, and many storage facilities are permitted use. The applicants currently operate a standalone mini storage on parcel 023856000 and have an active building permit to construct a new mini storage on parcel 023856006. Contingent on the board's review, the applicants plan to abandon the lot lines separating the two parcels and combine them. Once the parcels are combined, there will be enough air to construct a third mini storage building. An Appendix B is attached to this memo depicting the proposed recombination and proposed improvements. The Dare County Planning Board reviewed the proposed CUP at their May 11th, 2020 meeting. Planning Board reviewed, reviewed the proposed CUP at their May 11, 2020 meeting and recommended approval. The Dare County Fire Marshal reviewed the site plan, and conditions have been added to the draft CUP addressing his concerns. A draft CUP is attached for the board's review, and other conditions may be added to the draft CUP if needed as a result of this meeting. A draft motion for the board's consideration is also included.
Thank you, Noah. Bobby, does the board have any questions with respects to this request by Mr. the Daughtry family?
Yes.
My only concern is the conditions. Bobby, have we discussed these conditions with, with the family?
If you all, one of you all at least would come up, we'd, if you were, come up so we can, I've got to ask you a couple of questions, and then you're free to give whatever.
Thank you all for being here.
Thanks for having us, Commissioner.
If one of you step up who's going to answer so that we can pick it up on the tape. Couple of questions. Do you agree and consent to the information that was just provided by Noah as being a part of the evidence in this hearing?
I do.
Okay. And do you consent to the content of your file and your application process as being introduced into evidence as a part of this hearing as well?
I do.
And do you consent to the conditions of the proposed CUP?
I do.
And would you consent to a fourth condition that's not on there, and that is any dumpster pad that you have be located upon your property?
I do.
Okay. With that said, that's all the questions that I have. If you've got something to add that you'd like to share with the board, then please do, and otherwise, they're available for questions from the board if you all have questions.
Yeah, I think we would just like to express that, you know, from a, we bought this property back in January, and it has been our mission from the beginning to make it a, an adorable property rather than an eyesore. It has been an eyesore, I think, for some time, and it is our intention just to keep making it look like a proper place where people feel, you know, the stuff is safe. Although it's been a very safe place for people to store, it's also been a kind of a collection of other things that have been, been removed, and removing those other things is where those two proposed, you know, buildings are going, and that would pretty much complete our mission for the property. Based on our conversations with Noah, it seems like the, a property line between the proposed buildings and the building that exists, you know, was not necessary, so we went ahead with, working with Noah to go ahead and do, you know, that in conjunction with getting the conditional use permit for the additional building that we're looking for. So.
Great.
But yeah, we're just looking forward to, you know, continuing to make the place a nice part of the community. Mr. Jim is part of the community.
Yes.
You know, the place looks a little better.
My father-in-law is your neighbor.
Yeah, I know. And, you know, that's, that's just the way we roll and do things. So we like things to look good for people, and, and we want it to be a viable business. And we're near, we are full of, with our large units. We have small units, some very small units available, so it seemed like it made a lot of sense that we would expand, you know, during this time.
Great. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for, for that. Jim, I know you had a question.
Yeah, I do have a comment. I would just like to say that these two have done a phenomenal job at cleaning up the place. It was a mess when they got it, and it is very well-kept now. And the building that's going up is going up very rapidly.
Those guys, three days.
Unbelievable.
Three days. He told me three days, and I said, really?
I went to Manio and came back, and they had the walls up. I'm like, really?
I know. It was phenomenal. I was stunned myself. But yeah, the building.
Good neighbors.
Thanks.
It's a good-looking site plan, too. Yeah, it is. Anyone else? Okay, the pleasure of the board, then.
I make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the conditional use permit and site plan for the proposed group development for William and Shelley Daughtry be approved as recommended by the planning board. Significant information documenting compliance with the Dare County zoning ordinance requirements has been submitted by the applicant, and reasonable and appropriate conditions have been identified and applied to the proposed facility.
If you would add to your motion, please, any dumpster pads located on the property be with them.
I would add that also.
Okay.
Please.
I'll second that. All right. Thank you. A motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman has been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous, and thank you all for what you're doing.
It's our pleasure.
Appreciate it. Y'all be safe.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item six on the agenda. Item six is the change of the OPEB irrevocable trust master agreement. Item seven is a reserve fund balance policy revision, and item eight is an amendment to the COVID-19 grant ordinance, and Dave Clausen will handle all three of those matters.
Okay. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. The first item is since 2008, the county's had an irrevocable trust in place, and we partially funded that trust for OPEB other post-employment benefits. That one specifically for retiree health benefits. What's happening is there's new governmental county standard board statements, and rating agencies are more and more looking at what they call unfunded liabilities. That went from pensions to retiree health. Now they're looking at other pension types. So the law enforcement officer special separation allowance is one of those specific pensions, and the day's gonna come when every county's gonna have to establish the same kind of irrevocable trust like we have for retiree health. And to do that, we engaged Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein, who drafted the documents for the original trust, and the idea is to change that original trust set of documents to a master trust agreement. So you'll have one set of documents, one set of trustees, and two accounts, one for retiree health and one that's already established and partially funded, and one for the law enforcement officer special separation allowance when that happens. They also drafted the resolution that's included, and Mr. Chairman, I asked you to adopt the resolution and approve the documents, but if you adopt the resolution, it approves that set of documents. So that's, that's our request is to adopt that resolution.
Okay. It's a lengthy, you want to read that? Does the board feel the need for the county manager to read that resolution?
I read it.
I read it.
I read it. I don't see any need.
Okay.
Move to approve.
All right. Then there's a motion on the floor to approve by the vice chair, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. Now, again, back to kind of our capital improvements plan and capital investment fund and debt affordability model that we've been doing for a year and three months now. During that whole process, we talked about changing our fund balance policies, and we looked at that as we went through with the financial advisor, D E C and Associates, that started with your board retreat last year. This is a revision of the board-adopted financial policies for the reserve and fund balance section, and I included a clean copy plus a copy of all the changes as they're marked there to adopt what's recommended by myself and the financial advisor, but I told Commissioner Ross earlier today, it also leaves, intentionally leaves the board with flexibility in what they can do. And COVID-19 is a perfect example where we're not doing certain things next year in the budget because of that, and this is saying, we intend to do these things, but it's leaving you the flexibility to, to have an out if you need them in case of an emergency or some kind of financial situation. The main three things we're asking you to do is to adopt what we've talked about, a target percentage for the general fund unassigned fund balance of 21% of the general fund, and that's just the number 10 fund revenue. And that came from the financial advisors based on what they've seen with rating agencies and dealing with other counties, and they're saying that if we want to maintain our current ratings, they recommend that 21%. Total fund balance in the disaster recovery fund of 1% of the general fund budget, and that came, I'll take credit for that one because you can be in a situation where you don't get a FEMA declaration, but there's also a state declaration you can get where the state will pay 75%. The state threshold is 1% of your general fund budget. So if we have that much, we'll be covered up until the situation where we don't qualify for any kind of declaration. And then, as we've talked about before with capital investment fund, we'll have ending fund balance in there each year, and we measure that as a coverage measure where that ending fund balance would be a certain percentage of your annual debt service. And we're saying we'll have a minimum of 1/3 with a target of 1/2. So our request is to adopt the policy update.
Move to adopt.
Motion on the floor to adopt as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross in house. Any further discussion? Commissioner Ross?
Just a couple quick ones. I've actually kind of raised these with Bobby and David earlier. The 21%, as you've correctly pointed out to us, is really kind of important for us maintaining that credit rating, which, again, replaces the prior guideline of 19% to 21% as a range. So we've kind of picked the upper end of the range, and we'll strive diligently to maintain that 21%. The, the second one was the annual budget of $10 million four to the capital investment fund, which, again, Dave and I and Bobby had spoken briefly, that we will maintain some flexibility as a board relative to that fixed amount, given conditions, so to speak, on the ground, if you will. And my last question was in Roman numeral number three, where Dave, you very helpfully pointed out the new reserve fund balance policy, so thank you for that. That's very clear. Any general fund unassigned balance exceeding that goal may be transferred. However, it doesn't have to be. It can be maintained or retained in that general fund and rise above 21%, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Those are my only clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have something, Commissioner Couch?
No, I'm still reading it, but thank you, David.
Any other comments, questions of David? Okay, hearing none, those in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
All right, the last item I have is, kind of an update on where we stand with grants for COVID-19. We had to file by today a plan with the state for the North Carolina Relief Fund. What we've done is try to summarize all the grants that we know about so far, awarded and potential, and I'll walk you through our process. As you know, there's a $67,000 health grant, which is a CDC grant direct federal money, well, through the state. We've got a $235,000 grant for, as a Medicare provider, based on 2019 Medicare revenues, and those relate directly to the health clinic, to home health, hospice, and EMS. There's a part two to that where we applied, I submitted that application on May 18, and when we submitted, they said you have a decision within 10 business days, and now I talked to the helpline today, and they said, we'll get to it when we can get to it. So no answer yet. We did report estimated loss revenues from those four programs for March, $298,000, and for April, $394,000. Those two are the only two grants that can be used for lost revenue. There's a House bill that has not passed yet that would award $76,000 specifically to elections. Transportation got awarded a grant last Monday, $140,000 specifically for the transportation system cost, and you can hit that grant first before any other grants or our own money. So that's budgeted separately in what you'll do tonight. There's the NC Relief Fund, which is $852,000. There's, I've put in here 20-plus pages on what is eligible, and we've gone through everything and tried to identify all the costs and also estimate and project because costs through December 30th are eligible. So as we look at things like opening up, say, the Dare Center or Baum Center or the lobby of the courthouse, the libraries, what do they need to do? How are they gonna open? What do they need to have? How much is that gonna cost for the next six months? And that's gonna continue. We will be back to you to revise these numbers, definitely. And then, as the state originally put, put it to us, FEMA is the backup, but that is now changed in that our original approach was what the state is now telling everybody to do is if you can identify that it's eligible for FEMA, you hit FEMA first. The state's kind of off the hook for that match because the feds have now said that the state can use their CARES Act money as a match for their 25% match to the FEMA grant. So what we did is we've gone through and identified all the different areas of cost that we could, and in that first table I've given you shown what's eligible under the CARES Act or the North Carolina Relief Fund and what's eligible for FEMA. And some examples are, you know, labor. Anytime I say labor, it's labor and fringes. Most of it's eligible under the relief fund, but under FEMA, only overtime's eligible. There are, there is one thing that's eligible for FEMA that's not eligible for the refund, and that's, or the relief fund, and that's an equipment use allowance. For example, the sheriff vehicles that were sitting at the checkpoints, we get paid an hourly rate by FEMA for that. Same thing with health department, reassigned labor, EMS labor, food and nutrition services, and social services. All their time are eligible for the relief fund. Overtime's eligible for FEMA. But then what we've really found, well, then let me say, you've previously passed the changes in the Family Medical Leave Act for COVID-19. All that leave cost is eligible for the relief fund. Then all the emergency protective measures like personal protective equipment, cleaning and sanitizing, medical supplies operating, supplies, medical sheltering, which is quarantine, EOC equipment, and testing costs are all FEMA-eligible. So we're pushing those over to the FEMA side. The one thing we've done is with the towns, and this relates to this item, is teleworking cost. Teleworking cost, in order to comply with public health directives through December 30th are eligible for the relief fund. Only those for the EOC are eligible for FEMA. That relates to towns in that we contacted every town going through what costs they might have, and any of their direct cost except for teleworking will be FEMA-eligible. So what's included in this plan for the towns are what they requested for teleworking cost through the end of December. You can also do public assistance programs and grants, subgrants to nonprofits. So when we identified everything that we know of that we've estimated that's eligible for a relief fund, that's $2.5 million. There's $600,000 of eligible for FEMA. If we deduct out what's eligible for FEMA, which is not that whole number, but eligible under the relief fund, it's still almost $2 million with $852,000 of grant available. So on the second table and then the third page, we've listed out what we've identified, actual cost March through May, plus what we've projected through the end of December, and either put them in the FEMA column or the relief fund column. The items I wanted to note in the relief fund column, there's $312,000 for teleworking cost, and that's IT and Human Resources reviewed all the requests that we asked departments to turn in, and they approved about half of them is what Matt said in his memo. Then there's an assistance program of $30,000 for social services. The social services director requested that amount to match what is already in the social services budget for a low-income energy and services budget for a low-income energy assistance program, specifically for rent and utility assistance. As I said, we contacted every town. NAGC had turned in a request of $31,636. Tana Killipole just turned in a request of $7,698, and we confirmed with all the others that they did not have a request, except Manio is still maybe. Then, both the social services director and the director of the Outer Banks Community Foundation recommended Interfaith Community Outreach. They're running a rent and utility assistance program. The $25,000 that we included in here, the 25 came from, that's how much the community foundation awarded that nonprofit. We would have a grant agreement with each one because the county's responsible for their compliance with the terms of the grants, and they've all reviewed those and agreed to them. So what we're asking, well, next, I also included the plan that was actually filed with the state. There's three or four pages there, which matches this final table. That plan can be changed any time, as many times as we want before the end of December, or by December 31st. So if there are things that the board, you know, it's your plan. If there's anything, I know it's hard to tell you if there's anything you want to change in this without giving you 20 pages of what's eligible, but we can definitely look at it and change it as you please. What we're asking for now is to approve the plan that we filed with the state, and then there's amendment to the budget we adopted the last time that matches, that makes the existing budget match that second table for both the relief fund column and the FEMA column.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Any questions of Dave?
Dave, when is these grants going to be? I mean, these are grant requests. Is that right? Or are we turning these in as, in fact, these are actual costs, and this is what we need reimbursement for?
Well, on the relief fund, we will file, we're required to file quarterly reports, which, most of these numbers are projections through the end of December. So that's why I'm saying we'll be back to you. Like, right now, we're just getting in reopening plans, like we just saw the library one last Thursday or Friday, so we'll get the health director to say yes or no, this is right, or you need to do less, or you need to do more, and then we'll figure out how much that costs, and we'll massage this as we go along. And the same thing with the FEMA items, some of them are projected. Most of the FEMA things are pretty, well, are more solid than the relief fund thing.
But if...
FEMA, I'm sorry, the FEMA one, it's the same FEMA catch every time. It's a reimbursement, and you don't know 100% for sure that you're getting reimbursed till you actually get reimbursed. But we've got good contacts with Norma Houston and Mary Glasscock at North Carolina Emergency Management, and Sandy West is talking to them every other day, asking questions and how we should do this and what's eligible and what's not.
So the numbers that we wind up with on this, as we massage it and go through it, and they obviously change and go up or down a little bit or whatever, that's a number that we would anticipate getting as part of the grant process to...
With FEMA, the state funds, we already have those in hand. They went ahead and paid those out to all the counties.
Gotcha, okay.
And we can reset priorities. He said you could amend the plan. So if our priorities change a month from now because we know something we didn't know today, then we can change those priorities for funds that we haven't spent. And there are things on there that are funds that have reimbursement for things that have already been expended that we'll get back, but there's also things on there for things that we think we're going to have to do going ahead, and those things can change as well.
Right. So the fact that the state COVID-19 relief fund right now is 852, just for the sake of the argument, if it goes to 900, then they would add $40,000 to it?
No, it is 852. That's it.
Yes, sir.
But if there was a new grant, if there was new legislation that added additional funds, then whatever the rules of the new fund is, but that 852 we have, we have it. It's in our bank account right now. There are rules about how we can spend it, and we can spend it whenever we want to, as it pertains to, as long as it follows those rules. He's telling you what the priorities that he and I have come up with in the plan, how we think it ought to be expended. If you don't think that, then you can tell us different, but we thought we would go through the towns, we'd get them, and we'd cover all these other expenses, and then cover ourselves as we reopen as well.
As the priorities, if the priorities were to change because of something we don't know about right now, you could shift the money to...
Yes, sir. To the extent that we hadn't spent it yet.
Yeah, right, gotcha.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes, again, just clarifying question, guys. On the chart, on page 49, the next to the bottom line, estimated eligible cost excluding the FEMA eligible of $1,971, funding available 852. I was doing the subtraction and saying that would leave about $1,001 unfunded.
Well, the key to that one is that there's a lot of costs that we've already incurred that are in departmental budgets already.
You're anticipating...
That are eligible.
Question, my part two question was, how much of that $1,001 is new out-of-pocket spending, not part of our ongoing department budgets?
Right.
Maybe I shouldn't ask that question. Should I withdraw that question?
There is no non-supplanting legislation in it, so we can't supplant.
About $1,005.
Okay. So going on down to the next chart, then, this is my clarification question. Health department labor net of grant under the first column is $401,000. I have no objection to that. I'm simply curious, the EMS labor is blank. For reasons that you guys would have prioritized, the 400 goes there, EMS labor is not funded.
I just thought health department sounded better. I mean, honestly, we could take...
Yeah, and I'm not challenging at all.
The sheriff, any of those labors...
I defer to your judgment on this stuff.
Any of those labor amounts you could throw in there.
Okay, that's kind of what I was, okay.
But we've got more expense than we've got money, so...
I understand that, yes.
And so as we look at, as you said, hey, this is not, this may be something we budgeted. If we cover that, then we can use that money for some of the, and we're hoping that through the two, the budget that we've already budgeted, plus their money, we might come out awash.
That makes perfect sense, Bobby. That's where I was leading, so thank you. Yep, I got it.
Got you. Okay. Anyone else?
I got a quick question.
Okay.
You might have already said this, Dave, but so the municipalities applied for the money for telework. What is telework?
Remote working out of the office.
Huh?
Work from home.
Remote working.
We have a significant part of our staff working from home.
Okay, okay.
And a lot of those, what we've seen with the two towns that we got, were, for example, leases on DocuSign for the planning department and monthly lease for Zoom, those kind of things.
We just, when we chose to begin working from home at the beginning of this, we didn't have what we needed to truly work from home, and our IT staff went in and rigged it so that we could, and they did some things that made it possible to work from home, but it isn't right, it creates problems, it's slow, there's lots of reasons why it's not good. And so this grant money gave us the opportunity to buy the correct equipment to do what we're trying to do, rigged up the way that they did it, and it'll allow us to do that in the future, and then when this thing is over, it'll allow us to be ready for the next time, for whatever reason we may have to work from home, we have what we need to do that.
Sure.
Anyone else? Dave, you need a motion to approve the North Carolina CR fund plan and also adopt the amendment to the grant project, correct?
Yes, sir.
It's a move.
Okay, is a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to do just that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item nine on the agenda. That's the Dare County Channel Maintenance Dredge Material Management Permit Project Proposal. Back in the fall, we talked about the idea that we needed a sediment management plan in place because we were running out of places to put dredge spoil. And there was a contract that CPE had at that time, and we were concerned, we didn't know where we were headed with our contingency funds, and so we postponed doing that, and we said we'd come back nearer the end of the year and see where we are. Well, we're there, that need hasn't gone away. We do have funds in our contingency to accomplish our share of that, and so we've made application to the Shala Draft Inlet Fund for them to award us a grant to pay 2/3 of the cost of that. That's been approved, and so our share to do that is a little, just a little over $100,000, of which about $29,000 would come out of the contingency fund. And so what we're doing tonight is asking you to approve that grant so that we can move forward with that, and we know we have the funding. And then we'll come back to you, well, I say that, I think you all may have approved, or if you didn't approve, I'd ask you to approve, authorize me to then, now that we have the grant and the funding in place, to execute the contracts with CPE to come in and actually do the work to find those places and move forward with that without having to wait until July to come back for our next meeting. So sort of two things in this, one, to approve the grant, and then, two, to authorize me to move forward with the contracts with Ken Wilson and CPE to do that work.
Okay. Any questions of Bobby? Okay, the pleasure of the board, then?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the contracts and to permit the county manager to work with CPE.
Enter the contract.
Enter the contract.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor about the vice chairman, it's second by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item 10 on the agenda is a memorandum of understanding between the National Park Service and Dare County. The park service is engaging in a process, as we speak, they call it sediment management control, but what they're doing is they're analyzing their beaches within the park for future beach nourishment projects, with the idea being that as we need a nourishment project, say, in Avon, where you've heard a lot, or you need one somewhere else where we have a breach, that we don't have to start from scratch with the environmental assessments and the things that they need to do in order to give us those permits. They're trying to do that now to sort of preposition that to save some time and some effort, and they're trying to do that park-wide. We had agreed, and you all authorized me to agree several months ago, to be a participating partner in that, and we have, we've had conference calls regularly. Until the COVID, we had several meetings about this, and those things will continue. The document that you have is the memorandum of understanding. For them to share what would otherwise be confidential documents under the federal process, they have to have an agreement in place between the participating entities, and so this is that agreement will allow us to share, and it basically says, we agree to participate and share any information that we have with them to help further that process.
Okay. Any questions of Bobby?
This makes a lot of sense, Bobby.
Yes, I thought the same thing. Good idea, yeah.
Absolutely. Great idea.
Okay, pleasure of the board, then?
Move to approve the MOU and authorize county manager to execute the final agreement.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Couch and somebody, Dan, I believe it was Commissioner Ross.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Chairman, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I think, Commissioner Ross, you have a...
I do. I reviewed the minutes from the last meeting, and I may have misspoken, and I made a correction to one of the statistics relative to percentage fatalities between age group and congregate living situations. I have submitted that correction amendment to the clerk of the board, and she has captured that for the revision in the minutes. That's my only one amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Anyone else? Move to approve. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as amended, or the minutes, rather, as amended, and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item 12 on the agenda are your board appointments. The first is the Dare County Board of Adjustment. The terms of Edward Mann Jr. and Anna Creve expired in May. Both would like to be reappointed for another three-year term.
Move to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to reappoint. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman and House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Game and Wildlife Commission. The terms for Kyle Perry, Missy McPherson, Robert Owens, and George Henderson expire in July, and all would like to be reappointed for three-year terms.
Move to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to reappoint. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Tobin and Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Roanoke Island Community Center. The terms for Kelly Harmon, Lynette Ford, and Daniel Selby expire in June, and they would each like to be reappointed for a two-year term.
Commissioner, reappoint.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to reappoint. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And then finally, is the Airport Authority, with the passing of Chad Jones, the Airport Authority reviewed applications on file for James R. Kenny, David Crowe Over, and Don Milbreth, and the council recommended the appointment of David Crowe Over to fill the unexpired term of Chad Jones until July of 2023.
Move to appoint David Crowe Over.
Motion on the floor by the vice chairman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Your upcoming board appointment and committee appointments in July, you have the East Lake Community Center Board, you have one term that expires there, the Library Board for the East Apple Mall region has two terms that expire, the Wanchis Community Center Board has two terms expire, the ABC Board has one term that expires, the Dare County Advisory Board has five terms that expire, and the Health and Human Services Board have four terms that expire. And, Mr. Chairman, at the appropriate time, I need to come back to you and request a closed session.
Okay, thank you, county manager.
That would be your agenda.
Okay, thank you, sir. That brings us to item 13, which is commissioner business and county manager, and I would like to ask Commissioner Tobin, you mind starting it off?
Sure. No news on the dredge, it's still illegal. I don't know how long that's going to be.
Imagine that.
Yeah, I know they are making progress, and really, the only other thing I'd like to say is, I'm really proud of our community and the protest that they had in Manio. It really went off without any glitches. I was not able to attend because it's the busiest time of day at our business, so I had to be there, but I was able to watch about 45 minutes of it, and it was really, truly, an uplifting experience, and I'm just real proud of our community for it.
Thank you, Jim. I heard very, I had a prior commitment, too, but I heard really, really good comments about that. That's great to know that our communities respect, does things in a respectful way. Commissioner?
I had a question for you, Jim. You prompted it, I had it in my mind when we came. On the dredge, I was approached the other day, and sadly, I was inadequate to answer the questions. They were specifically concerning the dredge, the status, where are we, what are the major hurdles to complete? Is there an estimated timing for, you know, the arrival of the new dredge? Kind of a FAQ kind of thing.
Okay.
Is there a chance that, and again, not right now, but sort of a half a page kind of just summary, because again, I'm sorry, I'm not well-versed in it, but there are a lot in the community, especially in the fishing community and boating community, that are very, very anxious and very interested, and sort of, here's what the dredge will be. It is now in this stage, it is targeted for completion, it'll be assigned to dredge channels in Dare County from Hatteras to Oregon... channels in Dare County from Hatteras to Oregon Inlet, and including Mantio and Shallow Bag Bay and that sort of thing. So frankly, I'd like to carry it with me and be able to answer the questions better, to be honest.
Handout.
So that's sort of just a personal request, if possible. Thank you.
Okay. That it?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have three quick ones. With regard to Albemarle Commission, we are, unfortunately, the vetting process is taking longer than we thought regarding our new director candidate, and it should be completed this Thursday. As in three days from today, we will be meeting for the first time in person with appropriate distancing and protective measures in place at our office in Hertford, so I'm looking forward to that. We have not met in person since, I believe it was February, so it has been a while. The second comment is more of just a general observation from me that I will summarize, and I've been watching and reading with frankly, some concern and alarm when I see books, op-eds, movies, materials, that as little as six months or a year ago would have been considered certainly free speech that one would see or read, now being regarded as unacceptable and must be eliminated from our conversation and our vernacular. And I almost can't make this one up. I have a three-year-old grandson and a year-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter, and they love a program called the Paw Patrol, but maybe you're not familiar with it.
Oh, yeah.
Six little pups in the town that kind of save the day in each episode. If I didn't read this in the New York Times, honestly, folks, I wouldn't have believed it. But there is an objection to one of the puppies in the cartoon who happens to be, each one is a different profession, sort of a firefighter, construction worker, policeman, pilot, air pilot. The policeman character, who does good each episode, by the way, they save the day, not surprisingly, they're being criticized or called upon to remove the character. Which leads me to my final point, and I'm speaking to our deputy in the audience tonight, and I hope you will share with Sheriff Doughty and your colleagues. You all represent the best we have to offer. You perform your duties with professionalism, calm, and integrity all the time. I've visited you on the bridge, I've talked with you offline, I've talked with the sheriff offline. I can only tell you that, from my perspective, you have my utmost respect, gratitude, and appreciation, and that the last thing that I've seen, which again, stretches my bounds of credibility, is a defunding of police movement that quite frankly, makes no sense to me and will never be supported. I will never support that as long as I'm sitting in this chair, and again, I just want to convey my heartfelt thanks to you and unqualified support. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Here, here. Here, here. Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Well said, absolutely, this board, I'm sure is unanimous behind everything you said there. It's just unbelievable.
Yeah, I didn't want to speak for the board, but I had very little doubt at all.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have very little to go over, but I did want to echo Commissioner Ross's comments. I've said this in our last meeting, and I'll say it again, I have worked side by side with many of our law enforcement officers here on the Outer Banks, and also quite a few across the state of North Carolina, and I have the utmost respect for all of them. Don't let a handful dictate what the whole industry does. I can't say enough about, especially the officers here in Dare County that I've worked very closely with for a good number of years, and like I said before, I don't know of any of them that have ever had a complaint filed against them. And it goes to the character of the person, and it also goes towards the weight of the badge. And if you ever heard that country song that's just out now, I would suggest you listen to it. It really brings it home to you. I would have a pet of the week, but unfortunately, they were not able to film that today, so I do strongly urge you, if you are looking for a pet, our SPCA has plenty of them. Go grab one. Our history for today, I'm actually doing it for yesterday, was Flag Day. Not a huge celebration went on for Flag Day, which normally doesn't, but Flag Day actually goes to, kind of starts back in 1777, when Congress passed a flag resolution which shows old glory, the Stars and Stripes. In 1885, a school teacher in Wisconsin, B.J. Senegrade, took it upon his students on the 100th, or closer to 100th anniversary of the flag resolution, and educated them on the flag and what it stood for, and decided to actually start a Flag Day celebration within the school systems. And it went on from different school systems, not only in Wisconsin, but also the state of New York actually adopted their state education, adopted the Flag Day memorial, and it wasn't until 1916, President Woodrow Wilson made it a national recognition, and it wasn't until 1949, where United States Congress finally passed the Act of the Flag Day to be celebrated on June 14th, which is the anniversary of the 1777 flag resolution. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner House. I sent out a message on Thursday last week about Flag Day to quite a few folks. I'm proud to say that I fly American flag 24/7 at my home, and it's lighted. It's lighted, so I do it the proper, I do it the proper way, but I'm proud to display that every single day. Vice Chairman?
Thanks, Chairman. I'd like to get in that long line of stating my highest respect for law enforcement. Thank you for everything you and the department that you work in do. Thank you so much for all of us. Also, just like to remind everybody that the three Ws, wear face masks, wait six feet apart, and wash your hands often or use hand sanitizer, is as important now as it was when you first heard about COVID-19. We're not out of this mess. We need to stay vigilant, as the chairman said earlier in his remarks, and it is a personal responsibility, and I think you heard those words very early on in this, it is personal responsibility and doing the right thing. So please do not forget that, it is as important now as it was three months ago.
Here, here. Here, here. Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yeah, I thank you for your comments, and Rob, thank you for your comments, and thank you for your service to our community as well as your fellow officers. You know, something that, this whole thing with this mask thing, Bob, it's all common sense, y'all, and I, we, everyone in my restaurant, we all wear a mask, we have sanitizing stations, we have their temperatures, we take our temperatures when we come in the morning, we take the temperatures when they leave in the afternoon, and it's documented down on a piece of paper. We make them sign a sheet, an initial it, that says, how do you feel, and do you have a fever? All these things that go down, have you, do you have diarrhea, things like that, and just common sense things. You make, and you do those things because you want to protect the patrons, you want to protect your family. That's very, very important, but it's also common sense, you know? You do those things for, because you want to, you want to help your fellow man. It's all about respect, you know, all those things about respect, you respect your fellow people, and so this is a trying time we live in, y'all. I mean, it's really a trying time, and I go back to what my dad told me all along was, you know, always respect the people you're around, and always do the right thing. That's the bottom line. Show respect to the individual, and if we do that, we ought to be, we probably wouldn't have these problems we have today.
Amen.
Anyway, thanks for letting me share.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Couch?
Yeah, can you hear me? I had a cough and fit there a little while ago, and a couple of mic off, and it never came back on, so probably a sign.
There's reason for that.
I don't embarrass easily, obviously. I want to echo, and Rob, thank you for bringing up your points there, and all of you, and it is a trying time here with law enforcement. God bless them, and God love them, it is a thankless job, and not every American can do that. And, you know, some might say, well, why would you want to do that? And they do it because they are driven, because of respect for the principles of this nation, a respect for work ethic, and just a love of humanity, so I salute them, and God bless you. Also, on the mask stuff, I choose to wear a mask, and I was actually, found myself over at the Buxton Transfer Station, and I jumped out in a hurry to put some recycling on, and, you know, they don't know me, I'm in my shorts and flip-flops, and I was chastised by one of the sanitation truck drivers for not wearing a mask, and so I just threw my hands up and said, okay, I've got it in the car, I've got it in the car, well, it needs to be worn, and so I put it on. Lastly, and Bob, I agree wholeheartedly, thank you for your passionate pitch on the reasons we need to stay vigilant, and all of you, Vice Chairman as well, and you've worked hard, nobody's worked any harder than you, nobody's worked any harder than the members of this board, and just literally the thousands of emails, and this has gone on, we're in, you know, pushing three months onto this, and we just keep moving, and does it wear on you? Gosh, yes. Does it take a toll on your family? Yes, it does, but thank you for your passionate remarks here. Lastly, I don't know how many of you have been able to get down to Rodanthie and see the progress that is going on, the Rodanthie Bridge, the Jug Handle Bridge, the Fish Hook Bridge, whatever you want to call it. They've had some challenges on the north end, particularly with the piling driving. It is very compactful sand, that sand silt that is in that particular area there is, I mean, it doesn't perk very well, so they've had some real challenges driving pilings down there, but meanwhile, they've shifted to expedite their work on the southern, and they've rounded the curve, and they're heading on a straight, straightaway now. They've made an 11% jump in the past two months, and they're on schedule to have this completed in the fall of 2021, and it's a magnificent structure. We are going to have some, between the Bass Night Bridge, the Oregon Inlet Bridge, and this bridge, these are going to be two remarkable structures, and just yet another thing that testify to the beauty of our area here, not just from a natural standpoint, but from architectural standpoint as well. And everybody's busy, I apologize to the people with the protest over at COA Bargain Lot, I'm in the same boat as the rest of you. Urban, I feel for you, I know you're in there washing dishes, you know, I'm doing the same thing down at my place of business, and you just, you're in no position to drop what you're doing and go do the things you would like to do, because you have commitments to make sure that the people who are coming to visit us have a good experience while they're here. And our visitors have been sucking up a lot of inconvenience, and thank goodness, they're leaving, particularly in the Cape Hatteras National Seashore there, which is my level of experience, leaving in a good state of mind, and nobody's, we've not had anything that nobody's been able to surmount, so it is, you're right, Mr. Chairman, it's June 15th, we've got another couple of months heading into this, and it's going to be busy, hold on, it's going to be a wild ride, and just hope that everybody can get their rest and continue to provide that experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate your comments. I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about law enforcement as well. You know, I sit here and I echo my fellow commissioners' comments, as long as I sit here, there'll be no defunding of our sheriff's department, I can assure you of that, from my perspective. But while y'all were talking, I was sitting here a minute thinking, you know what, when I wake up in the morning to go to work and shower, I'm not thinking about having to put a uniform on, strapping a weapon to my side, some mace to my side, putting on a bulletproof vest, and walking out the door and facing God knows what, you know? I get up, I get dressed, you know, take a shower, get dressed, drive to work, get out, go in my office, and I don't have those kind of stresses every single day of your life, knowing that you got to do that when you get up to go to work. I don't know that I could handle that kind of stress, to be honest with you, because you never know what you're faced with out there. So God bless you guys for what you do, and, you know, it's, it is so sad to see the disrespect from groups out there for our law enforcement, it just, I mean, that's what protects us, folks. That's the democratic, free world that we should stop and think about how privileged we are every day to be able to have that, so God bless you. That brings us to County Manager's business, and County Manager?
Yes, sir. I need a, I have two things. One is, at the last meeting, you all approved Thompson as our debris monitoring company. We chose them and authorized me to move forward with a contract. We now have that contract in front of us, we didn't get it in time, they get it in the agenda, but it is before you. I need you all to approve that tonight so that we can get it in place, because we don't meet again till mid-July, we need it in place in case we have a storm between now and then.
Okay. Need a motion now?
Need a motion, yes, sir.
Pleasure of the board. Motion to approve.
Contract.
Commissioner Tobin, move forward.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And before I ask you for the closed session, do you want to have the finance director and the public information officer meet?
Yes.
I'll wait.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. Public Information Officer Dorothy Hester. Dorothy, welcome back.
Thank you.
You've been, you've been absent for a while, and understandably so.
I have been watching.
I know you have, I know you have.
Yes, I have been watching.
But we're glad to have you back with us.
It's good to be back, and being back, I did make a list of a few items I thought I'd mention, I hope it's not too long, but a few things I think are important. I did want to talk about COVID-19 communications. I know that you all have visited that website, it's darenc.com/covid19. We've put a lot of work into that, making it robust and a good resource. The forms, Commissioner Bateman, that you were speaking of, a lot of that information is there for businesses to use, signage, all types of things. The one thing that folks watch the most is the dashboard. PR is actually supporting Health and Human Services. At one point, we were more or less taking the lead when the officials were meeting pretty regularly. At this point, we're supporting them, but that dashboard is updated any time that Health and Human Services Director receives a positive result, test result, that number goes up. And I actually just checked, and we had four cases reported positive at 3:00 today. So you, as you go back, you can see, and there's actually data that shows you when those cases are added. So I know a lot of citizens are watching that and press people. I'd just like to mention that so folks know that they can stay up to date, that we are actively, seven days a week, 20 actively, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, maybe not 24, but 20 hours a day, keeping those numbers updated. So I also wanted to mention the Roanoke Island Dog Park. I think y'all probably know that that had closed because of construction of the new animal shelter, and it looks like I've gotten word today that that, it'll reopen possibly as early as Friday. We'll get a release out to those folks that use that as soon as we can nail that date down. But right now, it's looking like as early as this Friday.
I was out there Friday, and it really looks nice.
Working at the EOC, I was watching it as I came and went every day, and I was amazed at the work. There is signage, there will be signage there, as there is signage at all of our outdoor facilities about social distancing and all encouraging the behavior for, for good health. We have a new Dropbox out in front of the admin building, just out here for elections. So that's going to, that's newly installed in the last week. We just got the signs on that so people can drop off their completed forms for elections. So that's a convenience that we haven't had in place before. I sent an email to you all about our census numbers and how our, the numbers that are being publicized may indicate that our response rate is very low, when in fact, we're in pretty good shape. I think today, we're showing 65.1%. So it's actually up a few percentage points.
So the governor's goal is 82%?
It is, and they've actually extended the census. With COVID, it's now, I think, I wrote that date down, it's, the deadline now is October 31st.
Oh, good.
And this month, that, those numbers they're reporting are simply self-response, people who received a card. We know that we have a lot of people who didn't get a card because they use a P.O. box. So they've now dropped those bags, the census information, at the doorsteps, and I think starting this month, they'll start doing the follow-up where they start knocking on doors, but using social distancing.
Let me ask you this, Dorothy. I know that you could do that online, and you could also mail it in. So does those 65% numbers that we're running right now, does that include both of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone that has responded up to this point. The problem with our numbers is they haven't taken away the homes that they know and we know are not permanent residents. So, you know, when you do the calculations, so we actually go in every week and update those numbers. So our numbers on our census page, darenc.com/census, show what it, what it looks like without all those vacant homes there. So we're doing that.
I can tell you, when I go around in my business and I go to a rental property, and sure enough, there's a census tag hanging on it, I'm like.
Yeah. Yeah, they're out there, they are. And they'll be doing follow-up. It's, I just want to stress that it is, it's safe, it's easy, it's important, you can do it by phone, you can do it online, you don't have to have any contact, and I just encourage any of our citizens who haven't done it to, to do that. Large item pickup, I know in some areas that was postponed, and everywhere is completed now except Martin's Point, and I believe Public Works is confirming that this week. They're going to set the date. Will we get a release?
Yeah, Martin's Point has asked us to wait until September, and so we told them that we would.
Yeah, and it, thank you. I didn't, I didn't realize that. I just knew that we were kind of on hold with that one, working out the details. And I have to, I know y'all have probably talked about this, but it's hurricane season, so preparedness is very, very important. Everyone should have a plan, business owners, individuals. Readync.gov is a great resource for that. When we talk about hurricane preparedness, we often talk about storm surge. I know Donna and her committee, I put one of these brochures at each of your place about the know your zone, know your flood risk. Those new maps, those updated maps that it took many, many years, those become effective on Friday. And Donna did say that she's getting a lot of calls from people. And she had worked hard and developed, we worked with her to, to develop that obxfloodmaps.com. So you can go, anyone who wants to see what their flood zone will be that's effective on Friday can find it there. And I think the overriding message is, keep your flood insurance, even if it looks like you're less flood-prone, you need that insurance, and you may be able to get a better rate. And the last item I'll mention, I, I know I've covered a lot tonight, is our 150th anniversary. It was very, very disappointing. We kicked off with the chairman's breakfast, which was wonderful. It was very disappointing. We had our float ready, and unfortunately, COVID got in the way of the parade, plans for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, but we still have that, and I don't know what things will look like later in the year, but we may still have an opportunity at Christmas time, or, I don't know, to use that. A lot of the, we had an event at Island Farm, of course, that had to be canceled. We've still got the website, and we did go through that and delete items that weren't relevant anymore, ways to, 150 ways to celebrate. And we're still considering a photography exhibit with the History Center, depending on Festival Park, whether their ability to hang those photos, but that, where we would capture some of the important milestones that have happened over the past 150 years. So that's all I have, Chairman. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Dorothy, and it is very disappointing about the celebration of 150 years. As most of y'all know, the Lost Colony voted, the board voted to award a name, they, they honor this each season, and this, this year, they were honoring the 150th anniversary of Dare County in the 82nd season. Along the lines of Commissioner Ross earlier, there's some chatter now about the insensitivity of the play itself, and we're getting, we're getting some emails about the potential to eliminate the Lost Colony permanently.
I would stand against that.
So I'm just, I'm just letting, I'm just letting you know, here we are. Here we are, social media again. So just thought I'd share that with you folks, but.
People have lost their minds.
Yeah. That's our, that's, that's our foundation, folks. That's our foundation, you know, the new world. But I share that with you. Stay tuned. We're having some discussions as, as a board now. So, but thank you, Dorothy, for all of that information, everything. Hopefully by year end, we'll be in a better position to maybe, you know, do some things to certainly recognize our 150 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you got something else for us this evening?
Quickly, the, the animal shelter, I think they got the foundation pour finished before the rain started. Health and Human Services will have a Zoom pre-construction meeting within the next two weeks. COA, the architect schedule has slipped a little bit. Barn Hill is advertised for pre-qualification for the demolition work. Now they're looking at having the guaranteed maximum price to us at the 1st of November. We were looking at before at September. And then FEMA paid us today for debris, for hurricane, dorian, so we got 1.7 million. That's 75% of the amount.
Oh, wow. Good.
Fantastic.
David, did we expect that amount? Was that a surprise, or is that pretty much what we were anticipating?
That, that's exactly what the project work sheet was.
Thank you, David. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I need a motion pursuant to NCGS 143, 318, 11A3, to consult with the attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege in the matters of the opioid lawsuit, the Bailey lawsuit, and the Blackburn lawsuit, and to approve minutes for the previous close sessions.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
It's a motion by Commissioner House, is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobin and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. It will recess. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to the County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In the closed session, the board approved the minutes for the last two close sessions, and consulted with the attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and took no other action.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. Is, is there any other business that's been brought before the board this evening by anyone? Hearing none, then is there a motion to adjourn until, wow, July 20? Can you believe that? Wow.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.